Four o'clock, may I ask that you stand pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the which it stands one nation under God. As did Pearl.
There any additions, deletions, or substitutions to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Board. Yes, we are pulling item number three and we're going to place it to the July PNC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from staff? I guess that was the comment. Comment from Town Council?
No, sir.
If there is anybody that wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, may I ask that you raise your hand and that you have submitted a card to our clerk? We don't see anybody. I'd like to accept the motion, to accept the minutes as Robert.
I move to accept the minutes. I second it.
I'll conduct a roll call. Chair Stern.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ferguson.
Aye.
Board Member Errett.
Aye.
Board Member Butler.
Aye.
Board Member Cole.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Appearance review for 430 Mars Way. Len, do you want to swear in? Anybody who wants to speak at this time?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone who's going to speak on this item, could you stand and be sworn in? Stand and raise your right hand, please. Anybody else? Do you swear from the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Mayer. For the record, I have been sworn in. I am from Planning and Zoning and representing staff. The town has received an application for appearance review from Chris and Mary DeBelis, the owners and applicants for the property located at 430 Mars Way. The property is zoned residential, single-family RS3. There is an existing one-story home built in 1977 and it is approximately 2,340 square feet in size and a property that is about 7,000 square feet. The applicant is seeking to construct a 1,756 square foot second-story addition. And this has a 283-foot, square-foot front yard facing terrace. That's not included in that square footage. For the purposes of total square footage, please note that open areas like the terrace or balconies are not included in the gross floor square footage by definition in our code. The requested addition will increase the total building square footage from 2,058 square feet to 3,814 square feet. And the total footprint remains unchanged. It's 2,344 square feet. And it maintains the lot coverage of 33%, which is under the requirements of code, the maximum requirements code. The, as normal for these type of reviews, staff made a comparative table of properties that are within 300 feet of the property and within the same zoning district. You can see that in your memo on page or on your packet on page nine. We bolded the applicant and what they are existing and what the proposed are. These metrics that we use is total square feet as well as the number of stories and what's called Florida area ratio, which is the division of the total square feet by the size of the property. Which helps us compare those properties that may be different in size. We then highlight the range of those FARs and those total square feet to get a range of what's in the neighborhood, what is in harmony with the, with those that are within the study area. Now, this study area in this context, this is on R3, which is along Mars, actually included every property that is on Mars because this property is right in the center, dead center of Mars. And, but did not include any property to the behind, to the rear of the property or to the north of the property or north of Mars because those are different zoning districts. So when we compare those, we come up with a range of FAR and a range of the total square feet. The range is between .21 and .65 with the average being .36. For this context, the proposed is .54 FAR and their existing house is .33. For total square footage, it's 1,276 is the lowest and 6,148 is the highest, largest in the study area. The average is 2,358. And again, for that point of reference, the proposed is 3,814. So, the proposed second-story addition would result in an increase of the overall square footage of the proposed residence by 1,756 square feet. And would be inside the range of the total square footage of the study area. The proposed square footage of 3,814 would be 2,334 square feet smaller than the largest existing home in the study area. And 178 square feet smaller than the second largest home. Staff notes that the requested total square feet is under twice the average in both the FAR and the total. And thereby, using staff's method, meets the preponderance of the bulk and mass of the study area. Staff also considers other harmony factors such as proper site orientation, landscaping, scale, proportion, materials, and architectural styles. Staff finds that the house is well proportioned due to these architectural choices that are defined by the applicant in their statement. I could get, we didn't, like, I can get a little more into the architecture as I break down some of the other elements. As noted, there are some other parts of harmony that we have to go through. There will be a circular stairwell visible from the front yard. This is number, I believe it's number three in the harmony criteria. That those would normally be hidden by a wall from public view. But, this is a major design element for the front terrace. And because the stairwell is an integral part of the form and function of the terrace, it would not be in keeping to conceal that stairwell by a wall. That, so we request you to consider that. Also, number five, the height of the applicant's addition will comply with the criteria of code that's under 40 feet. The addition of the second story does not diminish the horizontal appearance of the house as the front terrace serves to break up the massing of the home. The, also in the existing backyard patio, provides a similar treatment to the rear facade. The maximum height of the home is 27 feet, nine inches, which is below the maximum 30 feet. Staff notes that when considering in bulk, it's often measured in terms of volume. Since the FAR is the most comparable measurement of volume, the proposed .54 FAR is harmonious with the existing FAR in the study area. In terms of massing, mass is often depicted as a two-dimensional plane, typically from the perspective of public view, although not necessarily. We all heard of like four-sided architecture. But in this case, we're looking at the street frontage. And the applicant has provided architectural features such as the front yard terrace, as I mentioned, the metal railing, the circular staircase, front-facing gable, the round louvered vent, the faux-lap siding, and that front-facing balcony and also front door canopy. These are all, and of course, the window finestrations are all things that break up the visual mass, massing of the building in terms of, of, of that criteria. In terms of proportion, it is staff's professional opinion that the proposed building is well proportioned and balanced to the whole of the building. There are no large blank walls and everything does seem to be fairly in context with each other, you know, in terms of, of the massing and proportion of the building. In terms of scale, the scale of proposed single-family, also known as like a vertical proportion, is compatible with the visual effects of the addition not being overbearing to the width of the house. But please note that 31% of the existing homes in the study area are one-story and this is a two-story addition. So it's not technically in harmony with the preponderance of the study area. However, what staff could note for you is that the applicant is providing setbacks that are twice as much than required. The RS3 requires a total of 15 feet, usually when it's balanced, seven and a half on each side. And the applicant is providing 20-foot setback and 10-foot setbacks as they are existing. So take, you know, we also took that into consideration for our overall recommendation. It is staff's professional opinion that the proposed two-story addition is in harmony with the other structures in the study area. This is particularly the case when several of the components of harmony are considered. And that is staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here to also answer any questions this time.
Questions for Steve?
I just have a very general question about Mars Way. Its own independent zoning district, is that because it's a two-way street that connects Route 1 to Ocean Drive? I mean, I don't know why it, I mean, it's just more general nature. I do have some questions on the house, so, but go ahead.
No, it's not based off that. When they were creating the zoning districts, we already had homes built on those lots. And you can actually see one of those on Mars Way. So I believe it was the intent at that time that they didn't want to make any homes non-conforming. So they would make that street its own specific zoning district and we can see samples of that just on the opposite, on Neptune Road. Which Neptune as well is just its own zoning district as well. That was the only reason why, not because it's a cut-through street.
Is there any reason why, just, and maybe it's just because you drive it? And I'm sure the residents probably don't like that as much because there's only two accesses to Route 1, so you go the most efficient way. But it seems like there's always cars parked over the sidewalk that go into the road. And it almost seems like you're driving through Center City Philly for one block of, of Junea Beach, which is weird.
Jim, we had this conversation many, many times. Yes, it is a cut-through street. We have done a speed study. We have done a volume study on those roads to see if it could be improved. We have tried, or we had workshops talking about it as well to propose, you know, speed tables. We're the ones that put the striping around down the middle, you know, it's been discussed. And I don't believe at that time the residents had an appetite to move forward with any of those additional controls.
Even like a one-way, make it a one-way, which would make it safer?
Actually, one-way was opposed by both the county and fire rescue. But yes, that was one of the options.
Okay, it's just more knowledge, because the street is very unique and that, in Junea Beach, I don't think there's any street that ever has the car density that's spilling into the asphalt, typically blocking the sidewalks than that street.
Yeah, that goes back to maybe the 80s or 90s when they were making those, they looked like sidewalks. They're not supposed to be sidewalks. They're made on concrete so that you can actually park the vehicles there. There's a lot of history there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve?
I had a question. Were the plans the product of the applicant meeting with the town and making concessions? You referenced some concessions back on, you know, setbacks, or this just was the original plan that was submitted by the, by the applicant?
This was the original plan.
Okay. And I say that because I, I think the architect has done a fantastic job of trying to make the house become in harmony. Well, the same roof line, literally, I mean, it looks like a vast improvement to the existing house there, but still that remains in harmony, which was there. So you can tell that the applicant, the architect, made an effort to try and come up with plans that were in harmony and didn't just put up a totally different style home. And so I would commend you for that, frankly. But I don't have any other questions other than that.
I don't either. I think it's a good plan.
No other questions?
Well, I would agree too. When I looked at the plans pretty hard, I thought the architect likewise did a great job. Because it's, it's not maximus, which is always concerning to me at least. And, but it makes sense. So overall, I thought it was a good plan.
We can hear from the applicant now.
I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Steve. He did a great job presenting this. It's almost like he did it for me. But we worked really hard with the architect to do what you said. And we used some of the homes here on Ocean Drive and we used 490 Mars Way, the last one on the left, to try to stay in harmony. So, and we definitely wanted to stay on the footprint. We didn't want the footprint any bigger. It's an awful-looking house. And I knew that going in, so my thought was, let me try for this, is Plan A. Plan B would be to remodel it as a one-story, which is not what we want to do. So this was, was Plan A and Plan B would be to change the roof line and leave it one-story. So right now, the roof leaks, the air conditioning equipment is, is at its end of its life. So, you know, it's got to be, something's got to be done. So we thought it was good timing. And we plan to live there, my wife and I.
Good.
So I thank you all. Any other questions?
Are there questions from the board for the applicant?
Just a question for me. I'm a pain. Or, or is there a couple of houses there where they own like five cars or something?
So there is. There's a few houses. Bill would know better. He's my neighbor. He came here to support me. There's a few houses that don't have a driveway. Right. The one to the right of me does not have a driveway and I believe they have two or three large SUVs.
Yeah.
With nowhere to park them. So that's what you're seeing, I think.
Yeah, yeah. There are three big cars that are boom, 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 and whatever.
Yes.
You see them a lot. Okay. It's not your issue, I understand.
No, I wish they had a driveway, but they're super nice people, so we, you know, it doesn't really bother us that much.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No further questions?
No, no other questions for the applicant from the board? If not, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to approve. We don't have any.
You noted you have a neighbor here. Are there any other neighbors in, on Mars Way who have expressed any objections, reservations, concerns, to your knowledge, sir?
No, sir.
Okay.
Please speak into the microphone.
Uh, no. Okay. And there's been no comments received on this agenda item, is that correct, Caitlin?
Not that I received.
Oh, not you received. Okay. Okay.
We checked that.
Michael, I'd just like to make comments for the sake of potential future applicants on Mars Way or, or other streets. There's some features about the remodeling which really stand out to Mr. DeBelis's house here that I think are quite commendable. The fact that the added second story, you have horizontal, I don't know what they are, can't call them shingles, I don't know what word to use, but it adds the sense of horizontality to the house as opposed to verticality. Considering most houses on the block are single stories, that really helps it blend in nicely. Changing two garage doors to one also reduces the sense of size of the house visually. It doesn't change it physically, of course. The change of the sizes and positioning of the windows also is a really nice feature, which tends to change the, the sense of the size of the house and bring it, I think, closer to ground level. So I think those are all really commendable features of the house, along with the, keeping the pitch of the roof relatively flat. So these are really good examples of how, as you said, Mr. DeBelis, how your architect has really tried to blend this house in. Even if that wasn't done, the house would still pass, I think.
We got very lucky. He, this architect was recommended by the title company that we used. And he was great.
Yeah. I just think it's a good model for, for other people who are looking for ways to harmonize and this certainly does a great job of doing that. For the neighborhood.
Yeah, I second that. I mean, is that, that is one of the unique aspects of Mars Way, is I think there are some really old homes there that, that our community or town would be improved by allowing them to be remodeled in a way that is still harmonious, but yet, you know, allows you to, to make it a more modern and personally eye-pleasing residence for the town, so.
Thank you.
Kudos.
My only comment, I think it enhances the neighborhood. Looks very nice.
Good point. And I was, I was worried about you when I got in here.
With good reason.
What you could do is build a tech parking in their front yards.
Yeah, parking garage. I'm sure that would get through.
That would have gone over well, right?
Yeah.
Michael, I'd make a motion to approve the application.
We have a second?
I'll second.
I'll conduct a roll call. Board Member Cole.
Aye.
Board Member Butler.
Aye.
Board Member Errett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ferguson.
Aye.
Chair Stern.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Good job. Good luck.
Comments from the board?
Just general comments?
Anything you want to comment on.
Oh, man. This, this could be a filibuster. Now.
We'll limit you to three minutes then.
I've got to pick my kid up at camp.
Hey, I, the only comment I was, I guess I was a little disappointed last week on the outcome of the vote. And granted, I was only there remotely for part of it and I know it went like for three or four hours. But the fact is that at least for the year and a quarter, I've been on the planning and zoning committee. That the word property rights scaring people is only making the town more divisive, which is what we don't need. And getting texts and mailings. Personally, I find it almost insulting this past election for the mayor. It was, it was embarrassing. And, and, you know, we shouldn't have groups that are kind of being a little extreme. It's almost like Fox News and CNN to a degree. It's unfortunate. You think a little small quaint town like Junea Beach would, would succumb to that level? And trying to get everything to the maximum is, is really concerning to me when in fact, the fact is that I think out of the eight applications, a high majority of them were approved and they were significantly larger buildings. So try to scare people to text under the pretense that you can never expand your house is totally false and misleading. And I'm just disappointed with, you know, people that kind of inspire that sort of fear. That's, that's it. Thank you.
I know you had some comments, Jim.
I have some comments on a completely different matter. The town council's in the process of, of considering and adopting decorum standards that would apply not only to the town council, but would also apply to the planning and zoning board. And to my regret, the planning and zoning board does not have any representative at that meeting and is not able to voice its views on these decorum procedures. Even though they're, they're applying to us. There's a couple that I would like to bounce off everyone here so that we can at least make a comment for the sake of the council on a couple of matters. One is relatively minor. If you look at Robert's Rules of Order, which is what governs our meetings, Robert's rules says that in cases where you have legislative bodies or any organization with more than 10 members, normally the chair should be as removed as possible from the discussion process and be highly neutral. And therefore, the chair should never make motions or second motions unless they give any possible view of being biased. Robert's rules, though, says that that principle does not apply to organizations of 10 or fewer, simply because you have so few people. The chair is, and by nature then, an act, a more active member of the meeting. One of their proposals is that, and I think it's something that's commonly followed in this town, the presiding officer may only make or second a motion by passing the gavel to the next higher officer in the town, et cetera. It's always seemed like a sham to me. The, the chair simply passes the gavel, makes the motion, and then takes the gavel back. And there's no reason for doing it. It's a bit of a, I think, a silly game. I would just, my sense is that, that we should adopt what Robert's rule says, which is more sensible. The chair should attempt to be as neutral as possible, but there's no reason to, to play the game of passing the gavel to people. In fact, the chair may often want to add appropriate comments for a small group where we only have five voting members. And the chair may feel reluctant to do that because the chair can't make a motion or second a motion and explain his or her thinking. So I would suggest that the council not take that, but that's just my view and I'm wondering what the rest of you might feel on that matter. Anybody wants to speak?
Of course, the council's always welcome to attend our meetings and.
That's a different matter. I didn't even get to that yet. Just the question of passing the gavel.
Yeah, well. You're right. You know, it's meaningless. It's silly. But I'm sort of neutral on it.
I, I mean, I will have to plead ignorance. I mean, all this, I always fumble when you say motion, blah, 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 and all that stuff. The worry, and I get it, there has to be some sort of protocol on decorum. But it, it's hard for me to really speak to probably the level that you've been through since I'm kind of a rookie with doing this sort of stuff with Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, this board has tended to, at least through my tenure, to operate not formally in an informal way. And for the most part, works, works as a team. Everybody speaks, is encouraged to speak. And that's my view of how things should be. And so, and I don't think we've really ever had a contentious moment where pass the gavel or I'm going. The only time I can remember is way back when there was some noise about the beach club. And when they were trying to change their status. And we had standing room only here. And I can't even remember how many years ago that was. I don't know if Frank can. That far ago, right?
At least eight years ago.
More than that, I think.
Really?
Yeah, no, less than ten. After fifteen.
I think it was Mayor Mortz last year.
Yes.
Yeah. So, passing the gavel or not passing the gavel, we always seem, seem, everything seems to work out just fine.
I have to profess ignorance in that I have not seen the proposed new decorum standards. But I do think, and I would ask, you know, the staff, if they could provide us, or it's probably accessible, is it on the agenda for next month?
uh, you know, the staff if they, they could provide us, uh, or it's probably accessible, is it on the agenda for next month, okay?
It, it was on the agenda for today, but they postponed that item for Wednesday at three o'clock, Wednesday, June fourth.
Okay, Winston.
But yeah, you can pull the backup online, it's there.
Okay, so Jim, I guess the answer to the question is, you know, I think it may be who wants to appear, and, you know, either as a member, uh, either as a resident and homeowner or a member of the PZ board, give our thoughts on it. And make sure that the, uh, the council understands whatever concerns, you know, we may have.
Any, any views on passing the gavel?
I think that's silly. I mean, I, I don't see there's any reason why, it's just a sutter feud, kind of a parlor trick. I mean, it's still, we are still, as you said, Robert's Rules, um, we're completely in compliance with that by allowing our chairperson to make motions to, you know, act as not just a moderator of the meeting, so there's no reason to depart from Robert's Rules, in my opinion.
Yep, Brian, any thoughts?
Not quite sure enough about the passing of the gavel to make a comment.
If the town council feels that, that, that's a level of procedure.
Council meetings before. But what you talked about in the beginning, Jim, saying that, um, that we, that planning and zoning wouldn't have a, a say in the decorum. Rob did say this morning that it would go through, uh, the chairman, uh, whatever they decide before it would be written. So he did say that the chairman, um, that Mike would be a part of that.
I, I didn't hear that.
You, you, you need to be closer to the mic.
No, I, I, no, I didn't, I didn't mean I didn't hear you, Brian, I, I didn't hear Rob say that this morning, I guess it went over my head.
Uh, again, if the town council.
Well, um, Jim brought up the point, we were talking about quasi judicial procedures this morning, but about the quorum.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember either, Brian. I don't doubt you, but.
So Jim, just to further comment on that, I mean, I think, I think we've got much more serious concerns about the quorum at our, our meetings than to pass the gavel.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I said, as I said, Jonathan, that was a minor point, so.
Yeah, but, but my mind though, I mean, truly, i- if you've got a five-person town council and you're trying to, to have a pass the council, uh, gavel rule, that, to me, that seems to be kind of intended to take the mayor out of the process in terms of not being able to advance their agenda, or the chair, or you, Michael, right? So that, that's a problem I would have with that, uh, in addition to being above Robert's Rules, I mean, you're taking literally one key member of the council or the planning and zoning out of the substantive, um, decision-making process.
That's really my thought.
And, and I don't, uh, I don't condone that at all.
Yep, there's often been times in past years when I've wondered what Michael thinks, and Michael is mum.
Uh, if, if the town council wants to, uh, impose some standard here, uh, I guess we would hear from them. We could get more formal, I don't see, if something isn't broken, I don't see the need to fix it.
Problem is not at the P and Z level. I think anybody can see that, um, we have very, um, respectful professional meetings, and that will continue as.
Let me move on to a second point of mine, which is more, more significant, I think. Another one of their proposals, which I find really, really surprising, um, says that they don't, according to their new decorum rules that they're proposing, that members of town council should not be attending meetings of the planning and zoning board. So for example, if they adopt this, um, it would mean Diana shouldn't be sitting here with us today, which I think is absolutely ridiculous in my mind. In fact, I welcome the fact when council members come, they're listening to public comments directly, they're seeing people, uh, they're listening to us. It's not the same as, as playing a Zoom tape later on, if they have the discipline to do that. And, um, there have even been times when members of council have stood up and asked questions, which I thought were germane. And, um, I think that's just a terrible rule, I'm just going to read to you what they're, what they're proposing here.
Now, who's proposing this?
This is the council that's proposing to itself and its decorum rules, that they were going to vote on today. They're gonna, they're proposing this, council members should generally refrain from attending meetings of other town boards or committees. These appointed bodies are entrusted with the responsibility of providing independent recommendations for council consideration. Council member presence at these meetings may be perceived as undue influence and could compromise the integrity of the advisory process. Maintaining this separation helps ensure that committee members can deliberate freely. Well, personally, I don't feel Diana being here is in any way intimidating me and, and, um, posing undue influence, uh, on me, and, uh, I just think it's kind of heading us in totally the wrong direction. I think we should have meetings as open as possible and not be closing people out here. But again, I want to hear what you think, because our only opportunity to say something to council, as things stand right now, would be to, um, say something now and, and ask the council to, uh, hear.
The council is always welcome.
So just to clarify, these came from the man, I believe this is the manager's suggestion, this is not, so the town council has not endorsed this.
Fair enough.
They haven't even considered it yet.
Exactly.
So, but it, this was the manager's draft that he was presenting to the council that we never got to today, that will be considered on Wednesday.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Well, I, I would do what Jim says right here, I mean, it, it, it doesn't make any sense to me, so.
The, um, council is always welcome to come, they have in the past, and they have, uh, um, spoken on certain issues, and, um, I find it helpful and, uh, encourage it. It, it's, it, it, it's a no-brainer. But.
Brian, Jonathan, any thoughts?
Nothing further. I'll take a look at the rules, I, I'm, I'm sure there are some good proposals in there from our town manager. Um, and so I, it does, I'm not sure if this is an all or nothing, but it'll be up to the council hopefully to be able to figure out, um, what makes sense to improve the decorum and professionalism of our council meetings and what's kind of unnecessary kind of micromanaging. And, you know, we'll leave it to their discretion, hopefully they'll come up with the right mix there.
Sure, I, I agree with you there, I'm not saying, you know, would vote on it, but I think.
Oh, in terms, oh, in terms of the, uh, people, the, the, the board members coming here, I, I'd have absolutely no problem with it, I'll be, anybody on this board's intimidated. And frankly, I think it's the job and duty of our, our council members to be as informed on the issues and the, the views of the public and, and the residents as possible, and if, if coming and attending a meeting like this facilitates that, then, then certainly there should be no prohibition against it.
Brian, your two cents, if any?
No, I agree.
I, I think we have a consensus.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
I, I'll make a comment, though, uh, and that has to do with, uh,
Proposals.
Meeting with a, a, an applicant or a developer, uh, outside of these chambers. Now, for my part, uh, I don't do it, I've never done it, I don't think it passes the smell test. We've been approached in the past by, uh, applicants who seek a meeting, and, um, staff lets us know if we'd like to meet with them or not, my position has always been, no. But if they want to submit anything in writing for me to read, I'd be happy to read it. But then the discussion will be here and, uh, in an open forum, where the whole town is welcome to, to come and make any comments. I, I, it, I think it creates some suspicion, and, you know, bringing somebody with you, I don't think totally addresses that point. And, uh, and, uh, speaking is the ti- the time we've devoted at these meetings. We, we've never, ever constrained in, in my tenure, an applicant from speaking, you know, and, and fully explaining what their position was. So, uh, and it's always seemed to work out well. We've even had, uh, I think during the Waterford, uh, in, in the past, had a lot of people willing to speak, uh, with standing room only. And, uh, somehow, we got the point across that we didn't need to hear 11 people say the same thing over and over. And they voluntarily withdrew the same comments that had, that had been made. And we've always operated with a rule here, that if a lot of people come, uh, w- we then limit comments to three, three minutes, and, uh, uh, we don't allow seating of time to, to somebody else. My view is that if somebody has something to say, we don't want them giving, um, their time to somebody else, we want to hear from them. You know, we don't, we already had, had that other person's opinion, so. Again, I don't think it's broke, but, uh, I think this board, if they feel it can be improved, will speak up and we can make changes. Thank you.
I'd respectfully disagree with Michael, um, in cases where we've had some really big projects, specifically Coretta and Pulte, I think it's been very helpful to have been able to meet with others present, uh, at meetings well in advance of the submission of documents, so that you know what to be looking for, you know, you get much more preliminary background. When something is that important, I would be reluctant to wait until I simply got a packet of written documents where I could miss significant things and wouldn't even know some questions to ask unless I had been face to face.
As I mentioned, one, I welcome getting those documents.
Sure.
And second, the town manager today said that if it's something of that nature, nothing prevents the developer, in this case, from holding his own meetings and, and, and inviting town people, which I thought was, made a lot of sense.
Sure.
I, I would just add to Jim's point that I, I think in certain circumstances, again, when you have a substantial, serious project, um, there's sometimes a need for fact-finding, investigation, for facts that, that aren't presented to you by the developer or the applicant, okay? Um, you're trying to fulfill your duty to see if there's questions that might, um, influence or impact the decision, and then whether it's in the town's best interest. And, and, you know, if council members feel they need to meet with an applicant or an architect or an owner, um, again, in the open, transparent with folks around, so there's no back deal, there's no backdoor deals being done, but that, that's an important part of, 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 I think, being a council member and, and investigating in fact-finding missions, because you don't always, always have the facts that you may think you need to make a decision, and, and you may feel an obligation to ask the questions. Now, maybe there's a, a more transparent way to do that rather than meeting, you know, maybe the council member can set forth written questions or whatnot and get it in writing, but, you know, that, that's subject obviously to the, you know, sunshine law, so. Um, I, I think it's a fine line, but I think there are circumstances where meeting with the, um, the, the stakeholders is appropriate and, and actually to the town's benefit.
I would point out that there have been, not frequently here, but in the past, there've been occasions where more information was needed.
Right.
And rather, the applicant, rather than have, uh, ha- have his, uh, proposal turned down, uh, agreed and we tabled the matter, and then they came back, uh, uh, after listening to members of the board to deal with the, the issues that, that, uh, apparently didn't, didn't satisfy our board, so it always seemed to have worked. But again, uh, the way the rules are now, anybody is welcome to meet one-on-one with the developer. I guess with a staff member or however they, they've decided. Just for my, for, for my part, uh, I just don't think it passes the smell test, it creates some suspicion. Uh, and, uh, so, please, uh, send everything you want to send me in advance, if it's that big. And, uh, and then I can ask questions at, at the public meeting. But that's just my opinion, and I don't mean to impose it on this board. You, you, you need to do what you feel you need to do to get the job done, that, that's why there's not one board member.
Right, we all digest our information differently, everybody learns a different way, and if it doesn't pass your smell test, that's your opinion.
Right.
Everybody else should take it on themselves, yeah. As long as it's transparent, I don't see any problem with it.
It, it, really, most applications, the year and a quarter I've been involved with, have been homes, the only project that was kind of a development was the Pulte project, and something like that, I, I would say, maybe there'd be a two-review process or something, because it's, I don't know the steps involved, I would assume they deal with Frank's office, uh, staff first. But when we get the information, I forget whether we just had it for one meeting to vote, or did we have the information longer?
Well, just listening to the comments today, I think there was some misinformation and, and, and some people didn't really realize fully what happened. We, we had a, a big public attendance, and they all spoke in favor of it. Uh, and the people, uh, who, who live in the area, um, mo- most closely to that, uh, after the fact, we got a letter from, from someone that, that they didn't think it was proper, I, I think it was anonymous. But then subsequently, somebody has filed a, a lawsuit, and I don't know where that is.
It's an appeal, it's, it's still pending. There was an appeal filed, and it's, uh, still pending as of today.
They've not gone forward with it, or?
Um, it's been, the petition was filed, the response was filed, um, waiting for the petitioners to file their reply, and then it'll be, um, ready for the panel to consider.
What's that deadline for the reply? If you know.
It's coming up shortly, but I think they're going to request an extension of some duration, not sure what that is yet.
Okay.
Is that holding up?
The court itself says they don't really like extensions on replies, but that's neither here nor there.
Is that holding up the project at this point?
Um, I, I don't believe so, I believe Pulte's decided to risk it and proceed anyway, but that's at their risk.
That's what I thought.
Correct. Is that correct Caitlin, to your knowledge, yeah?
Pardon?
The project's proceeding, yes.
I believe so, and, and unless I'm wrong, the project has been sold, I mean, the property, haven't they closed?
They did purchase the property, yeah.
Yeah, so Pulte, Pulte owns it now, and if Pulte can't build what they're going to build, they'll sell it to somebody else who's going to put something substantially, substantially more, um, voluminous on that property, that's going to impact, in my opinion, the, uh, the traffic, the mass, the, yeah, so, again, not to rehash that decision, but I think that was a good example, to your point, of having a public, uh, meeting, workshops, that all the stakeholders coming together on, on that type of large project, so that, you know, questions can be asked before the project comes to you for, comes to us first for a, a vote, and so, yeah, I think that's the right way to do it there.
Was, was that done for Coretta? Was what, public meetings and?
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, Coretta went on for a while, they left, they came back with making changes. Subsequently, they came back and wanted a variance on the parking and, um, it, it, it's got a bit of a history. But it's not that there wasn't quite a fair, fair hearing.
Cause I think the Pulte won five and O when we voted on it, right? I don't think anyone was against the Pulte the way it was.
I, I think one person, one person was against it, I think it was.
Cause I remember being.
Am I right Caitlin?
Yeah, I think it was four to one, I think you're right, I think some, there was, someone was against it, but it, you know, as presented, it made sense. The thing that I still mentioned this before is, I can't understand, not necessarily in a home, which you could go there, but any sort of PUD development, why there isn't a, a sign, posting of a sign at the lot that is the same color, same, so people know there's going to be a development here. I'm sure, the, Juneau Beach doesn't want that, because you'll get some calls, but is that, is that done here at all? Like, most areas where it's a standard sign and?
Yes, yes, we, we're actually required to post the sign for planning and zoning and town council meetings, depending on the application. Maybe it's not as big as the ones that you see in the county that are like the three-by-four yellow signs, but, um, they're like snipe signs, and we actually put them at most of the entrances, so even the last one that we just did, uh, and Pulte, actually, I, I believe Pulte had six signs all around it.
They did.
Laurel, on US Highway One, and also on Donald Ross Road, so.
And, and how long in advance before the, the hearing?
Uh, it depends on the advertisement requirements, depending on the application, usually it's 15 days prior.
Of, two weeks prior?
De- depending on that type of application, yeah, so this Pulte is a different example, because we had a rezoning, we had a future land use, um, and then we had a planned unit development.
So how, that would, how?
I believe that one was 15, uh, the shortest, at, the shortest time would be seven, but I believe those were 15 days.
But on something that's significant, doesn't it make sense to have it like a couple months? I mean, someone would do it during the middle of August when no one's here, you know?
Well, the, the reason we, we have those minimum dates is because we do put the date of the meeting, and without knowing the date of the meeting, y- your recommendation would be to just say this project is
No, no, yeah, yeah.
Planning, by the town.
Developer is planning on developing this lot, because we have areas which could be tear downs, re- tried for rezoning, all that stuff. Most areas that I'm used to, nice suburban areas, they require a sign of a certain size, normally at least this size, okay? And that's sort of, that be posted for a couple months in advance before it gets to this level. So people driving by, neighbors, and granted, you got to weed out the NIMBYs and all that, that are always going to, that, that, but complain.
Yes.
Uh, but it, it just seems weird to me that, I, I can't even remember seeing a Pulte sign, if it was here two weeks, well, clearly I didn't, you know, so.
So, yeah, so, so again, just, we, we do do it for those type of projects, uh, variances, we do it as well, special exceptions, we do it as well. Variances, we do it as well. Special exceptions, we do it as well. We, we put it on the newspaper, we put it on the town's website.
Okay. I, I, I'm just saying if you're a neighbor or resident, most people aren't going on the website or listening to YouTube or hearing us talk. But if they're driving by a location and they see a sign, they're, they're going to say, oh, something's going to go on there.
We, we're trying to hit them from all angles, that being one of them. Yes.
Okay. All right. Just a point.
Yes.
Frank, a question for you still. If the second item, or the third item on today's agenda had still been here, the question is the removal of architectural review. Would that have affected, by removing architectural review, would that have eliminated architectural styles? That is to say, we say that there should be the mid-century modern or the Victorian or the cracker, that still would have been there.
That's still in the code. The, the code, the proposed code text amendment was just so that it wouldn't apply to single family homes and two-family homes per the state statute.
But, but you would have removed elements, but you wouldn't have removed style, is that correct?
Right, no, the styles, the three styles that we currently follow, they would still be there. Correct.
Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Yes.
One last point, I guess from my side is we had the recent council meeting on Harmony, council and, and P and Z board on Harmony. I'd like to really commend staff for the detail of their presentation and specifically the fact that they came up with a menu of specific recommendations. The 75% second floor, the setbacks, the idea of having a design handbook. Those were very, very helpful, I think, in helping the council focus on specific options. And that really moved things forward as the town manager did very skillfully during that meeting, I thought. So thanks to the staff for all that foresight because you really, really brought sharp focus to the discussion that day, so.
Well, with that and no further comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.